Kate.
The motion by me, second by Kate. Amanda, you want to vote first? That was an I. Don?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. Agenda passes. Presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. I don't believe we have any. Now is the time for public comments. So is there anyone on this call from the general public that would care to speak? Or is anything for us at this time?
Mr. Mayor, this is Tom Wolfe. I have nothing to report tonight, other than we had that meeting yesterday, and I thought was very productive, talking about the growing out on County Road 2 towards I-35. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And Tom, we're, Tom, Terry, we're going to be talking about that a little bit further, right?
Correct. We'll have an update with a little more detail under reports.
Okay. Anyone else on for public comment? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Consent agenda. The consent agenda is amended by moving item D to general business. Does anybody have anything else they want to pull or briefly discuss before proceeding forward with consent? All right.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
That's a motion by Kate.
Second, Amanda.
Second by Amanda. Don, how do you vote?
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Vote aye as well. So content, the amended consent agenda passes. We have no public hearings, so we'll jump into general business, which we have now two items for.
First item, Mr. Mayor, is liquor license for Firehouse Grill, because the business is owned by Kate Timmerman, who is a council member. She is required to abstain and therefore can't be on consent agenda. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2052 approving the liquor license for Firehouse Grill LLC.
So moved. Amanda?
It's a motion by Amanda. I'll second it.
Second. Oh. That's fine.
You get to vote first.
Aye.
Amanda?
Aye.
Vote aye. Kate, would you like to abstain?
Abstain.
All right. Motion passes.
Second item, Mr. Mayor, would be adoption of the 2021 preliminary budget. We would be asking the council to adopt Resolution 20-48 approving the 2021 preliminary budget as amended with direction from the council to adjust the hire of the new police officer to halfway through the year, 26 weeks, and reduction of the contingency that was proposed in the draft documents to 3% as opposed to the 3.9%. And then also adopting Resolution 2049 approving the 2020 tax levy collectible in 2021 with the following changes to the resolution. The gross certified general revenue would be $2,512,305. Property tax, aid LGA, would be $194,032. Bonded debt would be $275,000, and the net certified total levy would be $2,593,273. This reflects the changes that the council directed within the preliminary budget. It would be appropriate for the council to simply move what I just read for bolster and approve both resolutions.
All moved. Amanda?
It's a motion by Amanda.
Second.
It's a second by Kate. I'll mix it up. I'll vote aye. Amanda?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
All right, that passes as well. All right, on to general, or excuse me, on to reports. I think we're on, where are we? Fire Department. There you go.
So Fire District Work Group last report. Kate and I had reported that we'd had a meeting with the Fire District Work Group, that there was a recommendation from the group to make some modifications to the fire allocation formula for the renewal of the fire services contracts, starting in 2021 through, going forward. The council had indicated their receptiveness or willingness to go with the recommendation of the Fire District Work Group to amend the formula, and had recommended a three-year term for the updated contract. As I'd reported then, New Market Township had reviewed the proposed change to the formula. They were supportive, and the Cedar Lake Township Board still had to discuss it. I was asked to come up to their board meeting to basically give a report on the topic and provide technical backup to their representatives, so to speak. Their discussion ended up, long and short, is they have an outstanding issue related to joint maintenance on a border road between their two jurisdictions, and they are unwilling to talk about the formula until New Market Township comes and talks to them about that issue as well. So they've tied the two together. So we are in a holding pattern until those discussions occur. I did indicate on the city's behalf that we would appreciate it if those discussions could be expedited, because even, one, because we do have to make decisions in our budget, and there are fiscal implications, as it is with theirs. And then as well, at some point, we need to send out invoices at the worst case, next year, and we need to know what the basis for that would be. And given any change to the formula, of course, we would send it out based on the current formula, because that's the existing precedence at that point. I don't think that this is, there's no animosity or anything towards the city related to this. I think, my understanding is they needed a hook to get New Market Township to table on a separate issue, and this is it. So more to come. I know those discussions have not been held yet, but New Market Township is aware of the desire, and they're going to move forward with making contact with Cedar Lake Township.
Doesn't sound like there's any questions. So engineering?
We met, Cory and I met with Nate Kruger. He's the owner of Kruger Excavating. They're the contractor that was awarded the Webster Wetland Restoration Project. And we walked the site, and it does appear to be fit, that they can start and do the work this fall. He put it on his schedule. He's got a major piece of equipment that's out due to some sort of an accident, and other work going on. So he thought it would be mid to late October when they move in. I wouldn't expect the work to take very long. It should go pretty quickly once they start. Cory agreed. We do a little bit of pre-clearing on one end, and we need to get Nate some information, which we've been sending out for his preparation. The shop drawings, everything's been approved for the submittals, for the structures and the pipe. So it's just when he can clear his schedule to get onto the site, we'll be getting started.
Rich, is there anything potentially delaying them getting on the site in that, within that schedule, or those estimated times?
If it would start raining and not stop, you know, a little rain here and there, but we've had a dry past several weeks, which has helped quite a bit. And so I would think there's, or unusually early, you know, winter or something like that, but even with some frost in the ground, they can work there. In fact, it may be helpful, because it gives them a crust to sit on. It's dry and stable enough now, but, you know, it's, it's, it's very moisture susceptible. So it'd have to be something unusual, but based on typical weather patterns this time of year, I don't see a real problem getting in and done, so.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Don't see anyone jumping for questions. So on the community development.
Well, the only item that we had on the agenda for reports under community development was potential discussion regarding the CARES Act funding. You had requested a discussion with the full council to entertain the idea of extending the program to businesses in New Market Township. I know that Josh isn't working tonight, so I'm not sure if you want to defer that again. I can give a little update just on this week, since your packet went out. We have 10 applications from businesses and seven from daycares, with the total grant application amount is $75,000. So we still have $25,000 remaining, and I do believe that we will be getting a few more applications from local businesses. Any questions?
I'm just thinking of timing for discussing this again with the full council. Is it October that we go to a different meeting structure? Do we have?
We're still on our normal meeting structure in October. Mr. Mayor, it's November that we have, yeah, because of the Thanksgiving conflict, that we go to the third Thursday.
Okay, so October 8th, we'll have a meeting. Hopefully, we'll have a full council, which I do think is important for this discussion. So unless anyone objects to that. Okay.
I agree. I think you're moving in for the full council. Are we going to go beyond the business grant discussion and discuss the rest of the funds prior to the deadline?
It, it does work well together. We were planning to come back at the meeting on the 8th and start having a discussion about the remainder of the funds as well. So those two would feather together nicely. Also, we have had discussions with a township board representative. They were, as you saw from the memo, they were also allocated CRF funds in there. It was our understanding that they're looking to have a discussion internally about possibly establishing their own business grant program with those funds that have not been earmarked already. By then, we might have some feedback on whether or not they decided to do that, and to what degree.
Yeah, I think for me, it would be a good idea. Tom mentioned earlier.
Well, nice job.
Thanks. And by the way, we distributed our first check today. And so I'm just starting to process the applications today. Actually, I started, gotten through four of them. Most of them need to submit some additional information, but I think the process that you adopted and setting up, allowing, you know, staff to process it administratively is going to work really well, really efficient. Moving on, Tom, I don't know, you can give some input just regarding the senior housing, or not, I'm sorry, not senior housing, multifamily housing leads that we are currently working on. The council is probably aware that we are in discussions with multifamily housing developer for a specific property, and they are intending to, there is a purchase contract on the property, so that means they are serious. They intend to apply for tax credit housing for that project. And in addition, we've also this week received another inquiry from another housing developer that is not a tax credit housing developer, but a market rate workforce housing developer. So this makes three different multifamily developers that are actively in discussions with the city. I think that's interesting. In my career in New Prague, I really never worked on a multifamily housing project other than with the county CDA, so sign of the times, I think.
Kate, how's your hard work?
Any questions on any of the other updates that were included in the packet, if you want more detail on any particular items? If not, we can give a quick update on I-35 utility extension financing concept. The council recall that we were in very active discussions through last fall, into the winter, and then early part of the year, with both the Scott County CDA and Scott County itself. You recall that early in the year, we had a joint meeting between the Scott County Board and with the CDA Board to talk about a concept in which the CDA would essentially help underwrite some of the financial risk of building the infrastructure, sewer and water infrastructure out to the interchange, which is one of our big hurdles to getting development out there. The idea is they would essentially provide gap financing, and we would pay them back. As we were getting really into the details of this, COVID came down, and that had a number of impacts. One is redirected bandwidth within everybody's organization to respond to that. Two, it made any discussions, to some degree, less effective, as everybody was adjusting to the world of Zoom meetings and, and remote officeing. The other part of it is financially, everybody wasn't sure what the impact was going to be related to COVID, especially the CDA. They weren't sure what impact it was going to have on their collections and their other revenue streams going forward. And there was some feedback from them that they really needed to kind of step off for a little bit before they would be prepared to come back and have discussions, and they'd identified that August timeline for when they would be able to do it. So about a month ago, from a staff standpoint, this had been kind of on the back burner. We'd had other priorities coming through. We picked it up in earnest. We just yesterday had our first meeting with the tech team, which consisted of staff from all three organizations, to go through some financial modeling related to this topic, and to work out some of the remaining bullet points to the financial structure relationship that we would have related to it. I'm happy to report that we have agreement at a staff level from all the organizations as to what that framework would look like. We have to do some additional refinements coming out of that meeting, but right now, we are tentatively scheduled to go to the CDA Board on October 13th to basically present the concept, and then coming to the city council on the 22nd to do the same thing. Before that, we are also in the process of scheduling meetings with our developers and property owners out at the interchange area that we've been working with, I-35 Edelman Properties, to reconfirm their commitments related to this. You recall, one of the key components was that they were going to be agreeing to prepayment of their trunk fees to provide sufficient revenue streams financially to our utility funds to be able to support this kind of additional debt, in addition to the gap financing from the CDA. The general process would be that if we get a green light on the concept from the council and the CDA Board, the intent is that we would move forward to actually drafting documents, finalizing plans. So Rich, this is kind of a heads up to you. From a timing standpoint, we would need to get on our horse and ride it, both from the documents, but also finalizing plans for bidding purposes, so that we could be bidding this in prime bidding period around the first of the year. And then this would be, and everybody's assumption at this point, is it would be a 2021 construction project. Any questions? We'll have more detail, obviously, at the October 22nd meeting, but any questions at this point?
Just, it's really good news. It's, you know, we, me, Tom, Commissioner Wolfe, and Wesley Vermillion had met, excuse me, yesterday after, after the tech meeting was had earlier in the morning. And, you know, the scope of this project, you know, compared to a lot of the other things going on throughout the county and the construction projects, and how long they've, you know, seemed to take, this just started, what, about a year ago? Maybe, maybe a little bit longer, that we kind of, I don't want to say, well, yeah, we kind of hatched this idea to do this. And the county's been great. CDA's been great, and I couldn't be more excited about this, and what it's going to do for our community. So thanks, Tom, for being a big part of that. Anybody else have thoughts or questions or concerns?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say, woo-hoo. Nice work. This is exciting.
It is.
I mean, there's always that little bit waiting, as the mayor would say, waiting for that other shoe to drop on these types of things. But right now, unless something unexpected comes through the process, it seems like everybody has buy-in to the general structure. It's just working through the details, and there can be the devil in the details, but right now, it's looking very positive. I think our biggest challenge at this point is how quickly we can deliver, so that we can bid it at a good time during the year.
All right. Pete Parks?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. You have the minutes in front of you. I don't really have anything to add to them unless you have questions on.
Not. Does anybody else? Mark, that's just, that speaks to what a great job you do with the minutes.
Thank you very much. I'll take that as a compliment, of course. Thank you.
All right, CCEC?
Again, on that one, we are doing, I think, what most cities aren't doing. We're actually going to try and do a Halloween event here on the Saturday before Halloween. And we have that all set up, so it's kind of a no-touch type thing, working with Chamber on a couple of things on that, and basically be kind of a drive-through, things, what, bags of candy ready, and a few special, so to speak, effects for folks that go through. And our hope is that, it's not the same as it has been in the past, but at least it will be something for them as well, too. I think, as you know, the CDC and the state are recommending no trick-or-treating. So this might be a fairly popular event, I think, as well, too. So things are progressing on that, and I think we'll be ready to go for that from 10 to 12 this year. It will be free, so, you know, you can't beat the price on, on that one. Anyway, I want to thank everybody in the committee. They really came up with some great ideas to make this thing work, and we're hopeful of doing that. I got my calendar in front of me. I think I'll, I'm sure you'll ask me what the date is. It will be Saturday, October 24th, and the usual time, 10 to 12. And you can come anytime and set up the usual 10 to 11, 11 to 12. So watch your Facebook and your website, and you will see the pamphlet on that. So no pre-registration or anything. It doesn't get much easier than that as well, too. And of course, there'll be bags of candy for the parents as well, too.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Legislative, or, excuse me, other committee and board reports, legislative policies. Amanda, you're kind of our go-to here.
So the policy committees ended, well, last weekend, this week. I was on the two fiscal policy committees. A lot of it was COVID-related. Something that was kind of interesting that we adapted was a policy to ask for a state fund, in a way, for disasters that are not weather, environment-related, but more like the social injustice and those kinds of things, having some sort of funding from the state to be able to help cities if that comes down to their, comes to their area. There was one other one that Josh isn't here, but it's going to be moving to his service delivery committee, assuming that he will still participate in that next year, and that was regarding private roads. It seems that there's some very small communities that are having problems with small, or with private roads and maintenance, and also emergency vehicles getting to those private roads and being able to access and turn around and things. There was a lot of discussion about how there's, now I'm forgetting the word, authority for, like subdivision authority and things, or ordinances that most cities have in place to prevent these sort of issues. So that one wasn't, how it was written, wasn't well-loved by everybody on the committee, but I think there will be some better, better language and proposal on the service delivery committee for next year. That is all I have.
Thanks, Amanda. Scale. So scale exec is next week, or next Friday, and the general scale meeting is the following Friday. I don't have any real big, hard要说 updates. Although, Tom, did you want to maybe update on the police item?
Yep. So we had a service delivery committee meeting earlier this week. That's where the whole mobile field force concept that Brady had previously updated the council on got put for working through the details. We have the discussion. There was a little bit apparent disconnect between the chiefs and some of the administrators, and we weren't fully prepared to have a little detailed discussion that we were anticipating at that meeting. So we scheduled a one-off, topic-specific meeting for Wednesday yesterday, and it was a very fruitful discussion. The general direction that we're going is that, first of all, there needs to be a joint powers agreement in place that generally talks about this. There's a number of good examples that are in place. There's a committee that's working on that. Brady is kind of heading up that committee, consisting of chiefs and administrators, and legal staff from the county that's going to help put something together that can be reviewed by this work group, which consists of the administrators and the chiefs. There is also some additional discussion about the funding part, and there were two parts to it. One, a lot of the cities indicated that they already have some capacity for this right now, but it's limited, and it's not organized or collaborative within the county. So, for instance, Joe is a chief, you know, they bought a couple sets of stuff and maybe sent a couple of their officers to training. You know, I maybe had four sets of stuff and sent four officers to training. They haven't trained together. There's no command structure to coordinate them or anything like that. And that's part of what this discussion was, is to create that type of organizational infrastructure to be able to collaborate better. The other part of it is just budget-wise. Everybody's in the same position where they're fairly deep into their budget process. They haven't budgeted any dollars for this, et cetera. And so there needs to be some internal discussions within those organizations about their capacity to move the concept forward. I suspect that it's going to be incremental, where the goal for this remainder of this year is to get a structure in place, and everybody makes an incremental move forward with, on the hardware side of things, and the training, and then the year after, maybe a more aggressive effort. The other part, item that was brought up is there's potential outside funding sources. It was mentioned that there might, there has been some informal interest by some of our, some area organizations to potentially contribute to this effort. And one of our county commissioners has brought up a couple different times that there has been some successful efforts through nonprofit organizations, basically that facilitated donations to officers to equip them as well. So those are items that are also going to be explored. I don't think this is going to be an immediate item. I would expect that by the beginning of November, we may have a JPA that may be circulated for adoption by the various jurisdictions, and that the financial side is going to lag a little bit behind that.
Thanks, Tom. MBTA?
We have not met since the last meeting. We meet next Wednesday.
All right. I-35, Tom, Josh sent you some notes on that, right?
Yeah, he had, Tom, the last meeting we held as a council, Commissioner Wolfe had provided the update on that, and Tom, Josh had nothing to add to what Tom had provided.
Chamber of Commerce, Bryce, I noticed you were on, you on representing the chamber? If you're still on? Maybe he's not on anymore. I, I'll share a couple things that have kind of, that have popped up recently. First, the state of the city. The chamber has been looking to, I don't, both state of the city and a candidate forum, I guess, are the two items to update on. They, for obvious reasons, are struggling to find a venue that would work. The school, they had originally planned on using the school. I think it was the school for the state of the city, but the school, they can't allow that. I think me, Tom, and Gordon from the chamber are meeting, hopefully meeting next week to talk about how to do it virtually. They have some ideas on how to do that. As far as the candidate forum, I talked to Josh Malwitz from the chamber earlier today as well. They really, really want to do a candidate forum. I think it's, for all the obvious reasons, but... They really, really wanna do a candidate forum. I think it's, for all the obvious reasons, but they're, they're kind of in the same boat. They've been getting, they've been hearing more and more demand for it and are looking for ways to make that happen, and I just personally can't wait. So hopefully, hopefully, there's more news on that soon. So aside from that, I mean, Kate is a active chamber board member. Do you have anything to add?
Ken, I don't have anything. Sorry, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Kate. Discussion by council. You know, I had a couple things. I'm gonna table them until we have a full council, though. Does anyone else have anything they wanna discuss? Anyone feel like making any motions to adjourn?
I had Amanda.
Motion to adjourn. Amanda.
Motion by Amanda.
I'll second, I'll second it.
That's a second by Don.
Yes. I won one this time.
Since you just muted yourself, do you wanna vote first?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Amanda, you get the last word.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.